Let's call to order. We'll now call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for September 20th, 2016. We will begin with our invocation with our prayer and pledge.
Dear Father, thank you for bringing us all together to do the city's business. Thank you for this beautiful day and for each person in this room. Guide our decisions, be with our thoughts and our words. May everything we do be to your glory in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for
Thank you, Commissioners. Our first order of business is the approval of our August 16th, 2016, planning and zoning minutes. Do we have any corrections or additions? If there be no corrections or additions, do we have a...
I move that we approve minutes as read.
Second.
It's been moved and second that the minutes of the August 16th, 2016, meeting would be approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Minutes stands approved as read. We will now move on to our consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are plaits that meet the requirements of the City of Longview subdivision ordinance. These items will be approved with one vote unless any member of the Planning, Zoning Commission, any member of the public, or the applicant would like an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. We have two items on our consent agenda. If there be no questions about it, do we have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval, second.
It's been moved and second that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda stands approved. We'll now move on to our regular agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the Board. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The Board also considers plaits. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be: the public hearing will be open and testimony will be heard in the following order: the applicant, staff, the general public, those in support and in opposition to the requests. If you're part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than have each individual restate the same information. When addressing the Board, please begin by stating your name and address. Try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed. No further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the Board will vote on the requests. Zoning requests and Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City Council on October 13th, 2016. All right.
Thank you. Consider application P-1611 filed by Marley Barker to plat approximately 5.046 acres of abstract 177 of the William Robinson survey tract 1-09, Section 1, into two residential lots located on the northeast side of Harley Ridge Road and north of Cheryl Street.
Is the applicant present?
No, he is not.
Applicant is not present, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to plat two residential lots. You should have received a revised staff report. Comments have not been addressed and the applicant did not apply for a longside water service or provide staff with a letter of credit. Staff recommends denial of this plat. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for staff?
Is that piece of property in the Spring Hill annexation?
Yes.
And at what percentage are we being compliant with all utilities in Spring Hill?
They, well, he's further subdividing, so he has to comply with all requirements in the subdivision ordinance.
Well, we have the city...
The water is available, yes. He just needs to provide the longside service.
Would you define a longside service?
Any side, any longside service is across the street. And so typically, water and sewer, you'll have one service on one side and the other service on the other side to not cross lines. And that's engineering lingo, but anyways, the longside service, for him, water is on the opposite side of the street, so it's considered longside. So whenever a developer develops, subdivides land, he has to provide that longside service so that the new property owner does not, or he later on, incur that cost.
And what is that cost?
I don't know off the top of my head. It just depends on whether you hire a plumber to do that or whether you hire the city. In this case, the city would have put in that longside service had he wanted to, or he could have hired a plumber.
Any other questions for staff?
In typical applications, just so we're all clear, that letter of credit is standard, not in normal practice. You have to do that every time we do this, this letter of credit, even though he didn't meet the water service. All that is typically off the checklist he has to do before he would make the next step anyway.
If he, yes, if he did not, if he did not apply for that longside service, we would have taken a letter of credit for two years. And if he didn't install that longside service...
It's an either/or.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I thought it was a both.
Yes, sir.
And the outline of the property is?
It's that, it's...
That entire rectangle?
Yeah, that large rectangular piece, which actually has a house on it, so they don't, they already have their longside service. He's subdividing this portion off, so he's making two lots out of this larger. This used to be one large tract, and he's subdividing the piece off on Andrea that's facing Andrea.
I move that we follow this. Are we there?
No, we still have to have a public hearing.
It doesn't actually require a public hearing because of...
We won't have to have a public hearing on this? Okay, all right. Okay, the staff is recommending denial on this and have just been advised, we don't have to have a public hearing on this matter. So if there is a motion...
I move we deny this.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and second to deny application P-16-11. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Application P-16-11 is denied. Okay?
Okay. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD-16-10 filed by Brett Reed requesting to rezon approximately .899 acres of the David Ferguson survey abstract 71 tract 64, section 1, and a portion of lot 1, block 4151 of the Royal Forest Estates, number 1, from PD-1, which is general retail, to planned development general retail for a restaurant with a private club and a drive-through window on a real road west of Gilmer and east of Kingston Drive.
Okay. Is our applicant present?
Yes.
Please, please come and tell us about your application here.
Hi, my name is Helen Daniel. I think Mr. McDonald actually put his name first. Forgive me for having a late entry, I just rushed in here.
Your name and address.
Address is 3909 Chase Crest Circle, Longview, Texas, 75605. All right, we've applied to, we've proposed to have a restaurant predominantly for a drive-through area and also with a lounge attached to it. It's supposed to be unique in the sense that we're from Jamaica and we're hoping to bring some Jamaican cuisine to the area. But in addition to that, we'd like to have after hour services between the hours of Wednesday and Saturday, with Friday and Saturday being a little more extended, and Wednesday and Thursday being shorter hours between 5:00 and 10:00. The hope is to, in addition with the restaurant region, to also extend the services so that if you want to sit down and have a relaxing time where you can have a drink as well, that that can occur. I understand that there are businesses close by which may have some concerns. My daughter actually goes to one of the areas right beside it. Ms. Tina Vogel has a dance studio there, and we think that's absolutely wonderful and we want to ensure that whatever we do certainly upholds and actually edifies the City of Longview, and nothing is ever done to reduce any sort of thing that could create a problem to Longview. So we intend with all purposes to ensure that whatever is done is done, certainly uplifting and bringing more diversification to the Longview neighborhood and city.
Okay. Any questions from the Commission, from the applicant? Now at this time? Thank you. Staff?
Thank you. I know we went over the staff report a little bit last time, but I'm going to kind of go over it again. The proposed planned development site plan shows a one-story building that has approximately 2,332 square feet with 29 parking spaces. A typical parking requirement for a restaurant with a private club is one parking space per three persons based on the maximum occupancy assigned by our building official. Two access points have been provided off a real road and one on to Regal Oaks Drive. The restaurant will have a monument sign that will comply with City of Longview's sign ordinance in regards to size, height, and, and location with setbacks. The proposed landscaping will also meet City of Longview's requirements. After this, the previous meeting, staff did get with our GIS department and our PAR officers, and we did measure the, from front door of this proposed site to the front door, or actually, from door to door, and it was well over 300 feet. TABC, along with City of Longview requirements, have a certain distance requirement that must be met from anybody that serves alcohol, and it's 300 feet from door to door. This is approximately 700 feet from door to any door of the church, from any door to this building. So it is well outside of that 300 feet. Real road is a collector, which is appropriate for this type of development as long as access management is followed. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay. Questions for staff? This was, of course, the matter we heard last time, and there were some questions about the actual distance and what it was, and if they were, you know, if they qualified.
Yes.
As I understand it, they meet the necessary...
Yes, sir.
...state and city qualifications. Okay? Okay. If there be no more questions for staff at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in support of application P-16-10? Please come forward. There is anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of application P-16-10? Please come forward. Okay? There being none, the public hearing for application P-16-10 is now closed. Is there discussion or do we have a motion? Move to approve.
Excuse me, may I ask what, let's, I'd ask for clarification of the business hours. She may have said them, but I didn't hear them.
Okay.
The restaurant, I believe, will start, I'm not sure on the early opening times, but the restaurant is not an issue, I gather, but somewhere between 7:30 and 6:00 Monday to Saturday. The lounge is what I think is a little bit of a question, and it's between Wednesdays, Wednesday and Thursdays, 5:00 to 10:00. Thursday and Friday is 5:00 to 10:00, I'm sorry, it's not going to be on Wednesdays. And then Saturday, oops, I've got it wrong. Wednesday and Thursdays, 5:00 to 10:00. Friday and Saturday is around 5:00 till 2:00 a.m. or whatever is allotted appropriate time for the city. That was, that is our proposal.
And we do, the Planning and Zoning Department and staff, we do not regulate hours of operation, but we do regulate whether or not it can be a restaurant or a private, or a club, I would say, or a, a dance hall. And they have to be 51% food. So they will, they will be a restaurant. What we define as a restaurant is 51, that has 51% sales in food.
But the 2:00 a.m. closing is, again, which nights?
Friday and Saturday, yeah.
And there are residential areas across the street?
Yes, I believe there are some residential areas across the street.
Okay, thank you for your help.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other unreadiness? I have a motion without a second.
Sorry.
No, sorry. Have a motion without a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and second that we approve application P-16-10. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
One oppose. Application P-16-10 is approved.
May I ask to make the motion?
A public hearing will be held to consider application PD-16-12 filed by Maxi Properties, Gilmer Road LLC, requesting to rezon approximately 1.362 acres of abstract 177 of the William Robinson survey tract 29-03, section 3, from planned development general retail to planned development general retail for two restaurants with drive-through windows located on the southeast corner of Gilmer Road and Hawkins Parkway.
Applicants present, please come. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Dustin Anthony, and address is 3710 West Marshall Avenue, Longview, Texas. What we're, the question I do right there is retail property right now, I want to zone that for drive-through. We're going to put a Juicy's Hamburgers, a larger building there on the corner, and then the other building, we're just looking to do maybe a donut shop or some kind of coffee shop or something like that.
Any questions for the applicant? No questions for the applicant? Staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezon from PDGR General Retail to PDGR General Retail for two restaurants with drive-through windows located at the corner of, southeast corner of Gilmer Road and Hawkins Parkway. The planned development site plan shows two one-story restaurants, both with drive-through windows, one being approximately 3,740 square feet and the other one being approximately 1,100 square feet in size, with, both with approximately 51 parking spaces combined for both sites. The site will have one pole sign with a maximum 200 square feet in size with a maximum height of 35 feet and a minimum setback of 10 feet. The proposed landscaping will meet City of Longview ordinances through the development process. This project will meet all other City of Longview requirements. Hawkins Parkway is a minor arterial and Gilmer is a principal arterial. Both roadways are appropriate for this type of development as long as access management is followed. As you can see on the site plan, no additional driveways onto Gilmer or Hawkins will be allowed. They will utilize existing driveways on site. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Angela, why are we going from...
PDGR to PDGR?
Yes.
Because the planned development for the previous site, at that time, the ATM owned all of the property, so they rezoned all of it for the ATM down on the south, southern portion of this property. And then whenever a planned development comes back, when somebody comes back through with a different development, they have to rezon with a site plan. And so the site plan was only for the ATM, and now he's coming back with the two restaurants.
And that ATM is on the, as we look, right there, about...
It's right in front of the gas station.
Yes, sir.
I can't see from the drawings. I want to see the drive-through.
It's hard to see, I'm sorry. If it's in your packet, you can kind of see it in your packet. You mean, are you talking about the drive-through for the ATM?
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Right there, you see? It's that white concrete at the bottom.
That's the ATM.
Yeah, and they're going to tie it...
Whereas the drive-through for Juicy's is what I'm questioning. On that, once Mr. Anthony puts that building on that site.
Go back to, go back to him.
If you can see, his drive-through window is right here, so they're going to have to come in through, through Hawkins, come through the site, come around, and come back out. There's also a drive-through window for this donut or coffee shop, and it's the same thing. They're going to have to come through the Brookshire's parking lot, come through, come back around, and come back out.
There is one additional... Oh, I see. Never mind, it's turned around.
Do we probably understand what, what we're looking at here? Okay.
Angela, everything's been, we don't have to worry about anything as far as the Brookshire side, being able to go into their lots or anything, there's not any problems?
There's a share, there's a cross-access easement in place.
Okay.
There is, I've researched it.
Thanks.
Okay. We'll open up our public hearing on this application, PD-16-12. Anyone present who wishes to speak in support, please come forward. Anyone present wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. There being none, the public hearing for PD-16-12 is now closed. Do we have further discussion or is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve application PD-16-12. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Application PD-16-12 is approved.
A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-16-03 filed by Howard Parker requesting to rezon approximately .67 acres of abstract 256 of the M. Mann survey tract 66, section 3, from agriculture to heavy commercial C2, located on the southwest side of Delroy Street and east of Highway 31.
Is applicant present? Please come forward, give us your name, address, and tell us about your application.
Howard Parker, 1205 Tiffany Lane, Longview, Texas. We were here about, I guess about a year ago, trying to get this all-zone commercial, and they only zoned the front half of the property that I was trying to get zone commercial. So we're just here to get it rezoned with everything that's supposed, that I own zone commercial.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? No questions for the applicant? We hear from staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The applicant is requesting to rezon from ag to heavy commercial C2. The applicant would like to explain, expand his business onto this property. The property is, to the north, is zoned heavy commercial. The future lane use map does designate this area as commercial. This subject property was annexed in 2009. When annexation occurs, the property that is annexed is automatically assigned an agricultural zoning designation. Therefore, when development occurs, it needs to be rezoned. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
So what's its current use?
Currently, there is a house there, but there's also, I believe there's, he's utilizing some of it as a car lot.
We had this before last year. What was different from this application to, I presume I can ask that from the last time this was brought up?
The last time he just rezoned, you see up here in the red, the request was only for this portion. And so through the plating process, the surveyor has divided some of this land up even further, and it appears that they further divided this land, and this tract right here is the piece that he is going to purchase. There's three tracts.
Okay. Where it says Hatfield, that was our previous, as I look at this map, I'm just trying to clarify that. Where it says Hatfield, C2, Z15, that's what we dealt with last time?
Yes, sir.
And that is not included, or is it, that's already done?
That's already done, so we're requesting...
So we're just moving down the street, Delroy, further down?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That tract 802 is still going to be agricultural?
No, the, the 802, the striping, that's outside the city limits.
Oh.
It's, it has that designation because at that time of annexation, the city was looking at annexing that portion, but they had an agricultural exemption. And so they, they signed a development agreement with the city, which state law requires that anybody that has an agricultural exemption and is over, I think, I believe so many acres, I believe, can sign a development agreement stating that they will be outside of the city upon development. When the development occurs, the city has the right to annex them.
Do we know what is the future for this Hatfield property?
I believe he's wanting to expand his business onto this Hatfield property. So this Hatfield...
This same gentleman?
Yeah, the same gentleman owns this sliver, but he also is purchasing, I believe, this property as well.
Additional questions at this time for the staff or the applicant? Okay, there being none. We will open up the public hearing now for application Z-16-03. Anyone present wishing to speak in support of this application, please come forward. Anyone present wishing to speak in opposition to this application, please come forward. There being none, the public hearing on application Z-16-03 is now closed. Do we have additional discussion or a motion?
Make a motion for approval. Second.
It's been moved and second to approve application Z-16-03. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Application Z-16-03 is approved. Discussion regarding notification requirements for zoning requests.
Yes, sir. Mr. Carpenter brought up last meeting that he wanted staff to do a little bit of research to see what other cities similar to our size were doing in regards to notification, because the City of Longview abides by state law, which says that we notify, for zoning items, we notify everybody within 200 feet. And he wanted to know what other cities were doing as far as distance and signage requirements. So within your packet, we have researched several cities within your packet such as Baytown, College Station, Edinburgh, Flower Mound, Frisco, Huntsville, Keller, McKinney, Nacogdoches, Odessa, Sugar Land, and Tyler. As you could see from your packet, most of them do abide by state law. Most of them do go with the 200-feet distance requirement. There's two, Huntsville and Keller, they both notify everybody within 300 feet. And then Frisco, I talked to the planning manager over there, and they just say, they hesitate on the, they just are on the side of caution and go with 225 as the notification process. As far as signs, it's kind of a mix. You look at Baytown, Edinburgh, McKinney, Nacogdoches, Odessa, they do not post signs. Huntsville only posts signs if it's industrial. And then College Station, Flower Mound, Frisco, Keller, Sugar Land, and Tyler, they post signs. So you kind of have a mix as far as what those communities do.
Angela, well, thank you for that. That was, I'll tell you, Mr. Chairman, I was kind of surprised what I saw in that when I looked at it, and I think the reason that it's been important to me is because we've seen, even before I came to this commission, we've seen so many projects that the notification within the 200-foot rule, everybody was happy with, at 210 feet, the wheels fell off. And that's the reason that I questioned why the, we do that. Now, the one thing that I will say from this, and it will be the will of the commission, is that I think that this gives us a... is that I think that this gives us a good argument or request for signage. Seven out of 12 is a pretty good number, on something that's important, is what we're doing. So I would, uh, defer back to the commission, uh, that we possibly just stay with the 200, but that I would ask that we ask the council to put some sort of a sign situation in, in place.
Uh, I think that we, we can find out exactly what, what's going to take.
Yeah, I think...
And, you know, what, what, I mean, if we can...
Yeah.
We can run this back through to see what it would take, uh, to do that.
Yes, because there, there are budget constraints, I mean, we don't, you know, we definitely did not budget for signs, we, you know, we have a tight budget, budget's been passed already, we don't have any money for, to pay for signage, so that's something that the developer is going to have to incur, um, whether it's, you know, them paying for the sign, and, you know, uh, and then we just have some kind of criteria that they abide by, or we bump their fees up and, uh, to incur, so that they incur that cost, um, but that's something definitely that staff did not budget for, nor do we have it in our budgets, uh, for signage.
Well, if we can, just take it back and, and get with Michael, and y'all take a look at it, and, and come back and give us some idea of what it would take, and what you can do...
Yes, we will, we'll take a look at it.
Or what, what needs to be done, and, and we'll, we'll just see, if that makes sense.
Yeah, find out if Tyler, Texas, uh, who's paying for the development sign?
Uh, the develop, I, I know, I used to work for Tyler, uh, we used to at first, um, the city used to pay for the sign, um, but it incurs a lot of staff time to put the signs out as well, and so Tyler has adjusted, when I left, they adjusted it, and the developer pays for the sign, and the developer puts the sign out.
He wants it bad enough, he's...
You know, and we might want to, just also for clarification purposes, because I find that actually there are people who watch this, because they come up to me in the grocery store and so forth, uh, we might want to explain to them the notification process of why we're having this, you know, this discussion, on how the notification process, Angela, when we have a zoning, uh, application in a neighborhood or in any area within the city.
Yes, so the zoda, the notification process, um, when we receive a, a zoning request, um, we, staff, um, creates a letter, and we notify everybody, and this is a state law requirement, we notify everybody within 200 feet of the request, and that's from their property line out 200 feet, we create this buffer, um, of 200 feet, and that's who we notify for the two public hearings, we do send a letter out to each one, and it's not, you know, there are properties that are rental property, we send it out to the property owner. Um, we do not post a sign, but we do notify everybody within 200 feet of, but for both meetings.
And that letter will not necessarily tell them what's going to happen, but it will tell them that there is a request been made to change zoning.
That is correct.
And that they, what date that will happen, and that they can come to the meeting and hear all the particulars.
Yes, sir. Or they can contact us, I mean, we do, staff puts, um, contact information, we put our address on there, we put our phone numbers on there, we put our email address on there, um, we would like, you know, for citizens, if they have questions, to contact us, you know, we'd be happy to provide any information we've received from any of those developers.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And on the deal where you were talking about from door to door earlier on that, that's TBAC, right?
That's TABC's requirement, City of Longview has adopted some of TABC's requirements, um, but that is, that is one of the requirements that the City of Longview did adopt, the 300 feet from door to door, and that's not front door, it's any door to any door.
Okay. Okay.
Angela, I would ask that when you're doing your research on the signs, I, I might like to see wording, signage, size requirements, and length of time that the signs have to be up prior to a meeting, I'd like to kind of know...
Okay, yeah.
What, when, when you're calling them, you might ask those questions, too.
Okay, we will.
They'll have to make our sign order, something.
Yeah, I mean, it's happening on this property, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Monument sign, 200 square feet or less?
It'll be a temp, I mean, it'll most likely be a temporary sign, no monument sign.
Sign, he didn't want any attention to his process.
All right. Okay, if, if, we know where we are on that, and we'll, we'll get back from staff next month.
Thank you again, Angela.
On that. Okay, staff update?
All items at PNZ, um, at City Council were approved, um, the S U P for Chuck E. Cheese was a split vote, four to two, but it was approved.
All right. Do we have any additional citizen comments? There being none, we thank you, and this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission is now adjourned.